All right. I want to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open to the public for attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but no participation at the link identified in the agenda. E-mailed comments sent and received by the city clerk's office at least 24 hours prior to the night's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I please have roll call?
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner?
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Espandola? Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Chaffin, will you please read our closed session item tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item on closed session. A conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.92. That's Gross versus City of Yuba City, et al. Claim number 4020102893-01. Claims regarding an arrest incident on April 12, 2020 resulting in alleged damages or injuries. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move into closed session. All right. We'll call this meeting back to order. This meeting is being held in council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. E-mailed comments sent and received by the clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner?
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Espandola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
All righty. Thank you. All right. Tonight's invocation will be given by Mr. George Barlow. And then if I could have Larry, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance following? You, sir? Yes? Please stand.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you. Thank you for this time, Father, that we can gather here. And, Lord, we pray for our council. We pray for the decisions that they make. Father, we pray for this city. And, Father, we pray for those first responders, Father, that are serving us and serving us well. We thank you, Lord, for all you do in our lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Chaffin, will you report out on their closed session tonight?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All righty. Thank you. Is there any changes to the agenda by the council tonight? Seeing none, the agenda stands as presented, which takes us to our ceremonial presentations. And the first one is Gibicki Pink October recognition for 25 years. And if I could have Nancy and Kelly, please join us down front in the council, please. These are always... Try now. Did that do it? There we go. These are always the fun things to do. And before we read the... Read the... See, after we did Yuba City Senior Center 75 times last meeting, they were messing with me, so... So, here we go. You know, I think I can speak on behalf of the entire council and our entire city what you guys have done for women in our community for the past 25 years, starting with your father, is incredible. And after we read this, I'll absolutely ask you guys to say something because I don't think we can actually quantify what you guys have done. And I know you guys know these numbers because it's not thousands, it's not even hundreds of thousands. You can tell us exactly how much you guys have done right here in our community. So with that, celebrating 25 years of Pink October, Gibicki's Caring for Women Foundation honors the survivors and celebrates those who have battled breast cancer, along with other female forms of cancer. All funds benefit the Gibicki's Caring Women's Foundation, which stays 100% local in the Yuba Sutter community and financially supports women with up to $2,000 in assistance who are battling female forms of cancer. Pink October was founded in 1997 as a single 5K race for awareness by Larry Gibicki in an effort to bring early breast cancer detection awareness to our local community. The Gibicki family strongly believes in community service and involvement in making positive contributions that enhance the lives of our community. Join us in celebrating 25 years Pink October benefiting the Gibicki's Caring for Women Foundation and all their generous contributions and support to the Yuba Sutter region, cancer patients, and their families, and to how much they are so much appreciated here in our community. So, on behalf of us, we want to present this to you in recognition of Pink October. And by all means, say it.
Thank you all very much. We... Since we started the foundation in late 2005, funds... Funding started going out in 2006. We've assisted 571 women locally with up to $2,000 in financial assistance. We just, this year, have upped that to $3,000. And if a woman has a recurrence, then we will assist a second time as well. We've had over 1.26 million go back out into the community. Other than the 571... Or, I'm sorry. I didn't get my numbers straight. 571 women, which would... I don't know how much it is, but the rest of it has gone towards imaging equipment and breast technology to support women overall in our community. And we just approved another $60,000 towards medical equipment for... To help with cervical cancer in the metrial and more of the women's lower tract. So, we are excited to continue this on. We have no plans of stopping. And we love our community and love giving back. And it'll continue with our kids as they help with setup, with take-down. Anyways, we assign them things. So, thank you very much. And Brad would like everyone to know that my community started... My event time started with the City of Yuba City.
All right. Joining me, let's give them a hand.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're going to move on to Casa de Esperanza. Director, Michelle Downey.
Good to see you. We've worked together once or twice, right?
We have. We have.
Exactly. So, as you know, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is October end of 2022. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas domestic violence leaves an imprint of fear and hostility. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people across all economic, racial, affectional preference, and social barriers, thereby affecting society as a whole. And whereas in the City of Yuba City, adults and children are victims of violence each and every year. And whereas research shows that by creating communities where people are connected, supported, and care for one another can reduce incidents of domestic violence. And whereas the City of Yuba City is committed to restoring the right to freedom from fear in our own homes and our communities. And whereas in our quest to impose sanction on those who break the law by perpetuating violence, we must also meet the needs of victims of domestic violence and their children who often suffer grave financial, physical, and psychological losses. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all citizens, agencies, and businesses to work together as a team in our community through prevention, intervention, and education programs to take a stand until society has zero tolerance for domestic violence.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to the City, Yuba City, for continuing to support CASA every year by saying that it is... October is being Domestic Violence Month. So, thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. Those are always the fun things to recognize, the leaders of our community. Let's go on to Agenda Item 3. Appearance of Interested Citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do have one request tonight. Mr. PR Joel, you have five minutes, sir. And as usual, for the record, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members. My name is PRS Joel. I reside at 2088 Liveo Cumbialar, Yuba City. Now, yes, I am here again for renaming that new park that you have done. So far, it's been over eight months that I have been coming out here, and we have not achieved anything. Now, going through all those things that I have gone through, and the only conclusion that I can make, that the mayor, I'm sorry to say, but since you're the head of the household here, and you're the one that is leading this and giving the Punjabi community a history of lies. Now, the reason I'm saying that is, here's what have I taken in a few weeks ago when you had a meeting with us. I had no idea that you were coming. Nobody told me that you were coming. But when you got there, and I kind of looked at one of the members, said, kind of looked at me, he said, "Hold. Don't say anything." So, when you arrived, you said that Mr. Tijinder Ma... Excuse me. Tijinder Desan has called you to come to that meeting, and you agreed. Well, I definitely didn't call you. He did. And then also, at the same token, you mentioned that you were out of town because he asked you came, and also Mr. Sarbtiara asked you to do that. Now, after going through what I usually been saying here for all those eight months, and Mr. Sarbtiara picked up, and he said, "Okay, Miss Dave, what Mr. Joel's been saying is true and correct, and we're behind him 100%," and he pointed at those people that were sitting there, you may recall. Now, after saying and doing that, I had to think, who is in charge of actually going through this process? I don't think any of these council members are. You are. So therefore, now I have to say, you are in control. Now, if you could, at that time, you came up within five minutes or so of writing up a procedure to do this, so you can bring it back over to the council. Now, Mr. Tijinder Desan, I showed them, it was the first one to laugh at it. The reason for the laughing was saying, "There he goes. As a politician, he put the 60 days because the election's going to be over with, and all this matter is the incoming election." I agree, I disagree. Maybe it is, because I am not quitting. So therefore, you know, then I had to keep rethinking. Well, none of the council member or you looked at the letter or that Mr. Karen Baye sent it. All of that is a lie. Well, I hate to say "all" because there is part of it is a truth. But none of you have checked it out whether those things that have written in there are true or not. As long as that piece of paper is there with your acknowledgment, it makes it a history. Which history is a lie. Now, you know, before my time runs out, I have one suggestion, and which is my last suggestion, and I'm not threatening you or anybody in here. I'm just stating the facts. You and I talked about a person, which I have not mentioned the name to anyone but you and I. If you consider that person to be a family member, talk with that family member. If that person says one thing that I have said wrong or done wrong, next meeting, I will come in here and apologize to all of you, and will stop saying, rename that park. One condition is, I would like to be there. Not because I want to speak or be there, because I want to hear it with my ears, and I want to see it with my eyes, which you have ignored what was in these papers. You never saw them, and you never heard them. So therefore, that's the only thing that I request to go along with you. The only thing that I will speak will be the formal formality of saying hello. If you guys ask me to speak, I will. Otherwise, I will not. So, next meeting, if you have done that, I will come here, and I will apologize and say, "No more renaming the park." But if he says that I am correct, I would like you to take proper action. So that way, it would be done. Simple. But I had to come out here for over eight months. And as the saying goes, after nine months, a lady gives birth to a baby. So it will be probably nine months by the time that I come in next. So that's the only request now. Then the following agenda will be... If you do not do anything at that particular time, again, it's not a threat. Well, we'll talk about it next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joel. Point of clarification, Mr. Chaffin, because since Mr. Joel's been here last, will you update the public as to the most recent actions that Mr. Joel was referring to, just for clarity?
Are you talking about the revocation proceedings?
Revocation proceedings that you drew up for the city, and those have been provided, please.
Thank you so much. Just as an update, Mr. Joel did request revocation proceedings. In other words, that would be a policy by which someone from the community could bring forward a request to formally revoke the naming of the park. There is a process that our office developed. The process was designed to give both parties a reasonable period of time and an opportunity to be able to respond. As has been stated, this has been going on for over eight months. We would like that if anybody did come over, like say somebody wanted to revoke the park, that's usually not something you do quickly and without evidence or without background. And so the revocation proceedings are posted online. Anybody from the city can see them. They outline a process where you get your evidence together, and then you present it to the other side, so both parties know what's going on, and then that party has a chance to give it to the other one. So it's what I call the due process. You take your time, you make sure that you do it right, and you make sure you're not hearing just from one party, and that everybody knows what's going on. So because the person who's bringing the park revocation generally controls when they submit the application, we wanted to make sure there was adequate time for someone else to be able to rebut that. And that's why I think the 60-day issue was brought up. 60 days is a pretty standard time in order to be able to get all your evidence together, assemble it, and also rebut it, and give it to the other person, and go through the process. So that's why that number was picked. It wasn't picked for any other ulterior purpose, but it was designed to allow both parties an equal and fair playing field in the event that the revocation was to go forward. And to date, we have not received an application for a revocation proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. One other question for you, just for clarification. Does any one of us sitting on this dais have unilateral authority to do anything, or does it take a majority?
It takes three council members in order to act.
Thank you. All right. I do have another card. Stephanie, you have requested to speak. You have three minutes. And again, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Rosino, and I live at 745 Lincoln Road, Yuba City. Okay. And I was going to read from this. I'll only read partial, simply because I'll give somebody a copy. All you councilmen will... Thanks to Sierra, we'll get a copy of this We the People document, so I don't want to waste time. But there was an announcement this morning, I don't know if you heard it on the news, where the sheriff of Riverside County was talking about an ongoing investigation, and now it's going much deeper into, let's see, voter fraud, which is a contentious issue. Anyway, including in the investigation, the Moranga Tribe, the Obamas, Gates, Podesta, Valerie Jarrett, who incidentally was assigned by Obama to take out New California State, which I want to speak to. And so things are moving forward. They're becoming more public. And I wanted to inform people, the last Constitutional Convention, I was honored to be selected and voted on to be one of the two Assemblywomen for Sutter County. And as such, New California, and I will quote, "We, the representatives of undersigned counties within the state of California, do acknowledge and humbly invoke the favor of Almighty God for continued civil and religious liberty to ourselves and our posterity." And there's a lot of us who believe that we have a one-party government in California. We have a governor who doesn't know the definition... Or doesn't know the difference between 30 days of emergency power and going on three years. I'm bad in math, and I believe it's a four-letter word. Mental abuse to humans. But even I know the difference between one month and over two years. But that has been foisted upon us, and we, the people, are standing up. And as you know, it takes 100 of the affidavits or declarations of truth to start an investigation. Most counties already have that. If you recall, Dominion and the rest of them are saying these machines are not connected to the internet. And yet, we have Shirley Weber, who is the appointed Secretary of State, just admitted a couple days ago, and I quote... Well, anyway, she... Oh, yeah, here it is. I'll read the whole thing. Kathy Darlene Allen, the registrar of voters for Shasta County, was served over 100 declarations or affidavits, or they're also called criminal complaints, by the citizens of Shasta County following November 3, 2020 elections alleging she violated her oath of office in numerous election code selections related to her involvement in the election. Ryan Ronco, Placer County registrar of voter, still denies the voting machines. 30 seconds? Well, anyway, we know there's a lot of fraud going on. All 58 clerks are implicit in it. It's on tape. We got videos. And things will be happening really quick. And I wanted you to know that there's a New California State, and we're here to represent the Constitution and freedom, and get rid of the monoparty rule where we can have fair and free elections.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there any other comments from the public tonight? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none. We will move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be acted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do I have any questions from the council?
No, sir.
All right. Any comments from the public? Please step to the mic. This is specifically on the consent calendar, Items 4, 5, 6, and 7.
I just wanted to know on AB 1276, a single-use footwear accessory and standard condiments, how much money are we going to pay to enforce that? I mean, people just have to ask. You can still get them. So why is Yuba City want to spend extra money doing some enforcement on mandates when it seems to be pretty innocuous? If you ask, you shall receive. Why do we need enforcement, and why do we need to have a resolution?
Yep. Ms. Langley, would you like to address that? Because this is a compliance issue, I believe.
I actually think that Ben was prepared to respond.
Sorry, Mr. Moody. I didn't see you going that way.
Evening. You know, so this is a state law, and we need to establish who the enforcement agency is. And with the city controlling the jurisdictional boundaries, the city's establishing that to be in compliance with the state law. There's no... Right now, it's really an education campaign. We're going to coordinate with Sutter County, who's going to distribute some flyers when they're out doing their annual inspections with environmental health. And then should there be a response or a complaint from the public, they would come through code enforcement, and we would work with the Environmental Division for information. So basically, it's a... There is technically, after multiple notices, a potential fine. I think it was set at $25. But it's really, this is education and to look for compliance. And we don't anticipate a lot of staff time going towards it, but it's to meet state law.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, wait. Our city attorney?
Nope. I'm so sorry. Wrong item.
Okay. I'll continue. Through the mayor, I move the consent calendars, Item 4 through 7.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Espandola, a second by Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and consent calendar is approved. We'll move on to business items, Number 8, Community Sponsorship Request. And that is Mr. George Barlow. And Vice Mayor, do you...
Yes. I need to recuse myself due to a conflict.
And the conflict is?
I'm on the museum board.
All righty, sir. We will come get you when this item is closed. Okay, Mr. Barlow, you have the floor, as soon as he gets in the back.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Yes, I'm bringing before you, community sponsorship request. City sponsorship reflects support of specific programs or events by an organization. The intent is that the public will receive some intrinsic cultural, economic, educational, or entertainment value from the program or event. Tonight, we have the community sponsorship requests from the Sutter County Community Memorial Museum Association. Current funds available in our community events line item is $7,500. Fiscal impact, monetary sponsorship in the amount of up to $1,000. And staff is recommending council adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship in request from the Sutter County Community Memorial Museum Association, up to $1,000 for sponsorship of the annual Trees and Traditions event.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the council? Hearing none, is there any comment from the public? Any comment from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from the Sutter County Community Memorial Museum Association of up to 1,000 for sponsorship of the annual Trees and Traditions fundraiser event.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden, a second by Councilmember Harris. Just point of clarification, are you directing 1,000 or a specific amount up to that? Because you said up to 1,000.
I'm reading the recommendation from staff of up to 1,000.
Okay. So how much are we gifting is the question?
May I suggest 1,000?
1,000.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. And the maker of the motion and the second is all... Okay. So perfect. So we have a motion for 1,000, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. All right. Let's move on to... If we'll get Vice Mayor, that'd be great. All right. Let's go on to Agenda... All right, let's go on to agenda item nine, wastewater treatment facility, affluent outfall diffuser relocation project, state revolving fund grant loan application. Mr. Moody, you have the floor.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So the item before you is in regards to the wastewater diffuser project and financing and really an application to the state for potential funding. And so, as you're aware, this has been, this project's been before you at various times over the years regarding design, funding, different options. And so where we're at right now is we're finalizing the design, and we're looking for funding. And so, one of that, with that, we're really getting into different available programs, grants, et cetera. It's a huge cost, 35 to 40 million dollars is, it's a huge number. It's a number that is very substantial, and with our existing rate structure, it would be a huge burden to put that all on through a private bond. And so what the city is doing is we're looking at all of the different options regarding a state revolving fund program that has low-interest loans and potential principal forgiveness. And so when we put an application in, based on some state criteria, they look at your demographics and available infrastructure funding that's coming through from the feds and through the state to see if there's some potential principal forgiveness where, say it's 35 million, they'll give us a 35 million dollar loan, but they're willing to principally forgive a portion of that amount. Also, we're looking at federal programs. Council's also been involved with helping us. We had Councilwoman Esmondola and Mayor Shaw. We had some representatives from the state up where we toured the facilities and looking for different opportunities to, as new funding becomes available, to see what we could do to bring in money. One of those was the EPA WIFIA, the Water Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act, and that's a federal loan program. This one's a little different because there's some hard money up front, $100,000, and then the interest, the loan, the interest for the loan may not be as desirable as the SRF program, but there's some variable term options where they basically have options on the money as far as if it's a 50-year financing versus a 20-year or a 30-year. And then we're definitely looking for grants, so anything and everything that's coming out of the state and the feds for grant funding. So we have our consultants blazing, and then also Jacobs, our design team, looking for options and making sure that the program is designed and ready, qualifies, so it'd be ready to qualify for any sort of federal and state grants as we're looking for those in applicability. And then you get into cash, bonds, and comprehensive impacts. And so with this amount of money, it's really a comprehensive, it's really a comprehensive issue as far as determining the available cash we have for projects, needs for financing options, debt coverage, emergency funds, our current rate capacity. And as we've, as we look at our current rates, we're really taking, they're taking a hit right now because of the inflation, because of the chemical prices, because of the different capital and projects that are needed to be out there and the cost that the capital projects are going. And so there's a real look at that. And then that ties into your bonds, and then just how it ties into everything else with permit compliance. And so what I have before you right now is that staff is finalizing the design and the permits, and we're taking step one is get the application in for SRF. And it's a little bit of the chicken or the egg. You know, so they're requiring to have a complete application, that you have these resolutions signed that says to have a complete package that you're ready to go into this financing. But really, we need the application to go in just so I could figure out, hey, how much are they going to give me? How much is willing to be a loan, the terms of the loan, and any principal forgiveness? Because that's going to tie into our strategy for rates for federal programs if we need to go there, or any other grants. And so what I'm asking tonight is really to give us the approval, approve these resolutions, giving me the approval to submit a complete application for the SRF program. And so that was a lot of talk, you know, and I'm definitely keep going into detail on any of those. But really, the two resolutions, again, the Designating and Authorizing Representative Act on behalf of the city to sign the application amendments and future agreement after council approval, confirming the city's intent to follow program guidelines, requirements. And so submitting the application, again, does not commit the city to accepting a loan. It really submits the application. They're going to come back to us in the spring and see where we sit. And so, and then there's going to be a real effort on our part to work with those project managers with the state to qualify as much as we can for that principal forgiveness. So with that, I'm looking for council to adopt resolutions, A and B, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moody. Is there any questions from the council?
I do, but I like, want to.
Well, taking questions first. Do you have questions or just comments after we go to the public?
No, I will later. We're just, he's just getting approval right now to apply, which is fine. I'll have questions later, though, I'm sure.
Okay, perfect. All right, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we come back to the council for action or anything?
Through the mayor now. I do want to clarify piece. I'm glad that you, this PowerPoint is really well put together, so I commend whoever did that, if it was you or the team, but that just kind of summarizes all the options of the financing opportunities. I think that in this, for us as a council, it's, the effort is to really find funding opportunities that are not going to be long-term interest or extra burden on our community. I think the process for this is to find those grants and those forgivable principal pieces. And the multiple meetings that we've had, part of why the state Department of Water Resources or the state water board will select projects are projects that are pretty much in the process of the queue to be selected. And we're working our way towards that process, and our team is doing this at the fastest speed ever that I've seen in other municipalities. And it's really great for us. Can we get one set of funding from the state? Can we get separate funding from the feds? There's new monies that just came out from the feds that possibly could be available to us, but I think we have to do our diligence of applying for all of these efforts. But the committal of all of this will come back to the council in any final decisions. This is just to say, we are interested. What do we qualify for? What are we good for as a council for wastewater? And this really helps us save our taxpayers because that tax rate study is going to happen, and it's a challenge with that, as most of you know. So I think you've done an excellent job, Ben, with your team. I would prefer the grants. I've said that over and over, but to get a $30 million grant is pretty tough at the state and federal level, but it can be done. It's just we have to find the right people to say yes to us, I think.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Ben, I do have one question. With all the new federal funding coming out, because we're going to have to apply for this and the grant that you're talking about, applications go into December. What is the timeline for us to hear back on it? Is it March, April timeframe, June, July timeframe, possibly? Do we know?
So right now, what we're hearing from the feds and from the state and from our consultants is that the new money that's been allocated through these infrastructure bonds is getting pushed through the existing programs. And so these existing program timelines have stayed consistent. So for SRF, it's due at the end of the year. Most likely, we'll hear from them in springtime. And then, my understanding is, over the summertime, the end of June or the fiscal year, they'll recommend an award. And so, and that will, you know, there's a lot going on, like we talked about with, right now, just to add to, you know, we have this existing diffuser that many of you have seen. The state has restricted that permit to, so we can no longer, after October 31, that we can no longer discharge out of there. Staff's working on a temporary point three where they're putting a pipe in here to discharge while we work through the ponds. But there's going to be some limits, there's some limits and permitting issues on that that's an interim measure. And so as we wrangle all of that and look for funding, that's really, the timeline's about spring where we're going to hear back for the SRF, and we're hoping in the meantime we could start pushing, you know, and then I want to make sure this is point two, is with the rate capacity, with inflation, with these chemical prices that are happening, with the CIP demand, this, and where we're at with our current limit with the Prop 218 grant, the city's kicking off a rate study that looks at this, analyzes that, and then definitely evaluates what the real capacity is for a rate adjustment, you know, so we're not just arbitrarily, but we need to look at that. And so that's starting up on a timeline that's running consistent with this also, so we could bring that information back to the council and kind of have a holistic view of your options.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Then I bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution designating and authorizing the Public Works Director or designate to execute the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Construction Financial Assistance Application and Amendments or Changes thereto and to certify financing agreement dispersment on behalf of the city for the WWTF affluent outfall diffuser relocation project upon future council approval. And also to adopt a resolution stating the city's intent to comply with all conditions of the state water resources control board's clean water state revolving fund loan program reimbursement resolution requirements for the WWTF affluent outfall diffuser relocation project.
Okay, I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, and I have a second by Councilperson Esmondola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Move to agenda item 10, selective traffic enforcement grant due to DUI enforcement and education efforts. Sergeant Hauk, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In January of this year, the police department applied for a grant funded by the California Office of Traffic Safety. We have received approval for $170,000 in no-match funding pending acceptance by the city council. This grant will aid the police department in maintaining an aggressive stance on the enforcement of alcohol and drug-related driving under the influence crimes, as well as combating illegal street racing, speeding, and other hazardous traffic violations within our city. It will also provide grant-funded overtime operations for pedestrian and bicycle violations. The grant will supply funding for a new DUI checkpoint trailer in the amount of $45,000, as well as three new state-of-the-art radar units to be used on patrol. Additionally, we will be able to staff six DUI checkpoints, all under this grant. Funding for travel and tuition to send two officers to standardized field sobriety testing school, two officers to advanced roadside impaired driver enforcement school, two officers to drug recognition expert training, three officers for drug recognition expert recertification, one officer for standardized field sobriety instructor school, and one officer sent to drug recognition instructor school is also included in the grant. Acceptance of this grant will help us reduce injury collisions and create a safer driving environment for our citizens. It is for these reasons that staff recommends accepting this grant in the amount of $170,000.
All righty, thank you, Sergeant Hauk. Is there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Ms. Member Harris?
Yeah, no question or anything. It just seems like, boy, that's a long list for 170. It seems like you're getting a heck of a deal on something somewhere. That's real, well done.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Through the mayor, yeah, I agree. I was just really impressed with the amount of staffing that you were able to put together, and you've been really successful at bringing in these grants, so I just appreciate that. And with all this DUI checking and the training, I did the DRE training years ago, so, yeah, believe it or not, but that's no here or there, but thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no other comments from the council, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor, I move to approve item number 10, staff's recommendations, items A and B.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harris, and I have a second by Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Sergeant Hauk? Now we'll move to agenda item 11, technical refinements to the camping and storage of personal property ordinance. Commander Runyon, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This is in reference to our camping and personal storage ordinance that is already in place and has been since 2019. Goal of that ordinance is to help reduce the public health and safety issues associated with unauthorized camping. Alls we're looking to do here is renumber, reletter the existing section. The proposed numbering will provide greater clarity of the section and allow for greater ease of enforcement, as was intended originally by the city council. Does not change the intent or the content of the ordinance. There is no fiscal impacts. Any alternatives would be just provide direction to any additional changes council would like to take, or take no action as it stands. The recommendation is just to introduce an ordinance of the city council of City of Uba City, renumbering, relettering the Uba City Municipal Code 5.23.050 by title only and waive the first reading. Any questions?
Thank you, Commander. Is there any questions from the council? Okay. Hearing none, is there any comments from the public? I do have one. Stephanie, you submitted you wanted to speak on this. And again, I know you did it earlier, but please state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Stephanie Rosino, 745 Lincoln Road. And the questions that I had had already been answered. However, I don't know how to say this, but no fiscal impact, you're taking care of a problem? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely, thank you.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, I bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have a clean copy of the ordinance that was presented to the city council, and that's the one we'd ask you to introduce this evening.
Okay, the one that was here?
Yep, and made available. Thank you.
All right. Bringing it back to the council for action.
Okay, through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to introduce an ordinance of the city council of the City of Uba City of California, renumbering, relettering Uba City Municipal Code, Section 2.2, wait, stop back, 5.23.050 by the title only and waive the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Esmondola and a second by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Commander. All right, let's move to agenda item 12. Does the council have any future agenda items they want to bring up at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move right on to reports and communications, and we'll go to agenda item 13, city managers' report.
So, good evening, Mayor and council. A couple of things to note. I just want to commend the fire department on their open house that occurred about a week and a half ago. It was tremendous to see the amount of participation, not only from staff, but also the public, the large number of children that were there and families, and it was a fantastic event. I might also like to note that PD has a couple of upcoming opportunities, Coffee with a Cop tomorrow morning from 7:30 to 9 at Bridge Coffee Company on Clark Avenue. And then they're also doing a PD trick-or-treat tour at the police department on Saturday, October 29, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., where people will be able to tour the PD and also trick-or-treat during that time. So a couple of really great community events put on by our fire department and our police department. So that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the council reports. Councilmember Esmondola.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of committees that I attended, the Feather River Air Quality Management District. We had a closed session and discussed labor negotiations, so all of you can't talk about it, but we're moving forward. It'll go an open agenda, open session next time. We also discussed about grant funding that has increased in the past 10 years. It, from the Feather River Air Quality Group Management District, sorry. It, from the Feather River Air Quality Group Management District, sorry. And so our funding that we received for the charging stations, EV stations is coming in, so that we're getting that funding as well. And there's going to be additional funding for that. Next, I think they might be releasing it in January of next year and close to maybe another million dollars. So we need to, as a city, hopefully figure out if we qualify for any of their, for the funding through Feather River Air Quality Management. There's only two areas for that particular funding. It's a section of it, I believe, is in Marysville and Yuba County, and another section of it is Yuba City underserved community sections in Sutter County. So I already called our section for us. Let's see what happens. The other is Regional Water Authority has been extremely busy in these last several weeks and have had multiple meetings on the same, same subject. I attended the virtual briefing for policymakers and decision makers on the American River Basin Study. I participated in that to learn, in particular about the study, how the effects in the, in the region of the Sacramento Valley, because it's interesting to know how the decisions are being brought forward with the flooding issues, the wildfire issues, the air quality control, air issues, and then the whole aspect of access to water. So that study was really interesting, and the briefing was for over an hour and a half. Also participated in the executive board meeting. We had a discussion of the executive director. We finalized his, his review and evaluation, and, and the board approved for the executive director to have additional coal increase with an incentive. We also reviewed a regional water reliability plan project proposed. RWA is going to be going through the following months, some particular project identifications, priorities in the region to help us as a region to become more coordinated in our efforts as we work together to try to get specific funding through the state and the feds. We also, I also participated on the Federal Affairs Standing Committee that we have. We reviewed some of the line items specifically from the federal budget. And there's, what I hear between RWA and Feather Air Quality Management is that there's a lot of money coming down from the feds. And obviously, like most federal programs, they don't, all the rules aren't put together, and it's one of those things we're going to learn as we go along. The other area that we talked about is the Build America and Buy America. There's a waiver update on that particular for some projects. That has been a challenge for them to build and get infrastructure done because of some of the requirements around that. Those are just a summary of the Regional Water Authority and Feather River Air Quality, but I also want to acknowledge as our city manager, the open house from the fire department, they did an excellent job, quite a bit of community involvement and participating and interest. And I think the next time they do, it'll probably be a larger event and much more participation, but I want to thank them for hosting it. And thank you for listening to me and staying awake over there, city manager, city attorney. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, mayor. I had the privilege today of attending a, a livability summit down at Sacramento State University held by Valley Vision, which is a nonprofit organization that gets together movers and shakers and electeds and all stakeholders involving community. And so, and all things community. They, one thing was notable, I could go on for a while about what was discussed, however, they did do a poll, a community poll, they called it the, well ironically, not the Valley Vision Livability Poll. But a couple takeaways from that, I won't go on too much detail, is they asked folks, and this is regional, not just Yuba City, not just Sacramento, but regional, there was the top 10 concerns, and, you know, it holds true even for here. Number one was homelessness, big, big, big issue. And then number two was wildfires and drought. So, you know, everyone, we're all in the same boat here. So everyone is trying to concern with that, people who are getting together, trying to, trying to figure out strategies to address this funding, to address philosophies that may need to be altered in order to do it more effectively. And that's the point of some of these summits, is people get together, and it's not necessarily the program per se, but you get the opportunity to network and then basically mine everybody else's experiences and what they've gone through, trying to tap into some ideas that might work or be applicable here at home. One more thing I'll bring up, they talked about, one of the questions they asked was, can you afford what you need to live and thrive? The number one and number 10, 30% of people out there, almost a third, don't know where their next meal is coming from. Food affordability and able to have it. 30%. That was, I think, pretty remarkable. It goes through other things, childcare, taxes, technology, transportation. But then also another thing that, it's got to be rough, it's been a while, but down in savings, 65% of people are living paycheck to paycheck, which I thought was interesting. And so, yeah, there's, there's a lot of challenges out there. COVID, of course, you can't, you can't blame everything on the pandemics. There's a lot of things going on, and how we emerge from that is going to be important to pay attention to things like this and, and continuing to talk to one another and figure out new ideas. And hopefully, we can somehow manage to put a lid on some of these regulations that come down on us to make things just more difficult than anything. But anyway, it was, it was interesting. It was a pleasure to represent SECOG and Yuba City Council at that meeting today.
Thank you. Councilmember Boomgarden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended a meeting of the Regional Housing Authority. Most of our activity that, during that meeting was surrounded around labor negotiations for management and staff, and more report on that later. They do continue to move forward with several projects on affordable housing here in Yuba City, along with the other, the region that they support. And I think we'll be able, able to, to share more about those as well. It's very promising for Yuba City itself. Attended the meeting of the Children's and Families Commission, Sutter County. Michelle Blake, who heads that, has, has a lot of programs going on. It's almost, it's just amazing the things that they do and the staff that they have, which isn't large, and the things that they accomplish. One, one particular item that I'll work with the city manager on, is they've come up with this website called Sutter Kids Community Resources. And you would think that this probably has to do with just kids, but it doesn't. It has housing and food and, and all kinds of different things that a person can go to. And I'd love to see us put a link on our webpage, if it isn't already there, to this new program that they're managing. Like others here, I attended the open house at the fire department. I thought that was an outstanding return of an event, and I look forward to them continuing that. You know, we just heard about, you know, grants again, and I just think it's fair to acknowledge, and I wish we could quantify this actually, you know, this year, how, how successful has staff been in either securing grant funding for different things, all the departments, not just one, all of them? And, you know, what that has gone for? I think that, that would be an interesting number to see, because we've got lots of big projects, but we've got smaller ones, and not that 170,000 is small, but look what it's accomplishing. And that's a burden that we don't have to pay for. I think it would be great. I want to signal that on October 20th, Pluma Street will be doing their trick or treat on Pluma Street. It's a pretty good event there, in a safe environment, if you go on down there. And finally, you know, some of us up here are, are getting near the end of our four-year term up here. And I start to reflect back now, as I look on that, and the things that this group of individuals has accomplished. Sometimes you don't stop and pause and take a look at that stuff, but once again, when, when you're out and about and you start hearing about, you know, the goods and the bads, and this is the time of the year when you might hear some of that stuff, it's important to recognize the hard work that staff has done and the leaders of our, of our city in getting things accomplished. And sometimes those don't go as noticed, or sometimes they're, you know, they don't, things are misinformed. And, you know, again, I love the outreach that we're doing, but I guess I would signal at this particular point in time, it's time for Yuba City to celebrate some of its successes and do as good a job as possible as communicating that to folks, because there's a lot of good going on in this community. We've been through a lot through COVID and everything else, but we're emerging on the backside. And quite frankly, I'm proud to work with all of you and the things that we've accomplished. And, and Mr. Cardoza, you were part of that as well, and I signal that to you as well. And anyway, I, I'll conclude my comments with that. It's just, it's sometimes humbling to look back and see what good we have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Man, I've got to follow that. Thank you, mayor. So I attended the Norsec Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group. We are moving forward with Spiva Avenue Water Main Replacement. It goes from Clark Avenue to Cooper Avenue in the, in the neighborhood of $375,000. The board will take a look at that and whether or not they want to approve it or not, but it looks pretty good. I listened in on the homeless consortium. I'm just going to hit the highlights on this because I think their intent is to give a presentation to the council. But everything revolves around the PIT, which is Point in Time Count, which is, it doesn't sound like much, but it's where the individuals go out and actually do a headcount of all the individuals that are classified as homeless in our community. And that number is high, and it goes back to affordable housing. They wanted, they did want me to mention it, November coming up is Homeless Awareness Month. Some good news, 12 unit in Linda is being approved, or they're, they're finishing, doing the finishing touches on Turpin Avenue, Turpin Road, which is a modular style, which will address part of the homelessness issue, a contract through Habitat. I attended personnel board interviews with the mayor, and those individuals were approved tonight for the personnel board. The ribbon cutting at the chamber for longevity roofing, I attended that in the mayor's stead because he had an event he needed to attend, and I gladly attended that. I would like to give a shout out to my, my learned colleagues who, I think they represented the city really well in the candidate forum at Boyd Hall. That you guys and ladies did a great job on that. And lastly, one of my favorite events in our community is coming up this Saturday. It's Tales from the Crypt. It's at Historic Marysville Cemetery. It is a fundraiser. All the funds go right back to maintaining the cemetery, and I will be portraying Sheriff William Harky. And that's what I've got.
He didn't say Barney. But to follow, now I have to follow that. There's a new sheriff in town, so. No, it's, for me, it's been the last couple of weeks lower on meetings and more on community things, just because of the way everything has been falling. But councilmember Harris, something, two points that hit me when you were talking about Valley Vision and SECOG, because all of that has been working together, and it's what we've been working on and continue to work on, learning from the other communities, because I like to use the phrase that we're commonly unique. And everybody will kind of figure that one out. And then the other one is what we've been fighting for, for four years, and that's local control, because we face it every time we turn around. So those were the two things that came out of that. Attended the Business Connection Breakfast, talking about career force development and the things going on there. Excited for what I heard, they're planning on following up with one more forum on this and bringing the first two groups together to really work between the high schools, Yuba College, the Marysville Labor Council, all the different areas to get that career and technical training going, which is a huge void, and I know that we've even talked about it here at the city, with the possible internships and different things over time, because not everyone's going to go get a four-year degree, and not every job requires a four-year degree. And I can tell you now, coming out of school and then setting down in the, the real job, there's still a disconnect, because there's what the textbooks tell you, and then there's what the real, real job tells you. So we desperately need that and looking forward to things coming on that in the future. We did the personnel board interviews. I think the selections we selected are going to be phenomenal. And as I told them all, as we did the, the interviews, is this the one panel that we hope we never have to call. So that's the one that we want them to serve, but never have to serve. Fire Department, kudos to Chief Alexander and your crew. It was a, basically a record attendance, from what I saw and heard about. I came by just before it kicked off and really amazing there. Givikis, we already recognized them earlier, but this is Pink October month, and there's a lot of activities going on, and I can't say enough about the Giviki family and what they've done, because I think it was just a little over a year or two ago, they gave a whole new X-ray, some kind of machine, hundreds of thousands of dollars to write out, so huge to those. So by all means, support them. And, and the last thing was the food bank dinner. I know several of us were there on Friday night. You talk about people being one meal away. They serve a huge void in this community. So with that, you know, kudos to the food bank and the great work that they're doing on that side and everybody that is supporting them. That brings us to one of those things that is always tough to do when you're sitting in this center seat. And tonight, we're going to close this meeting in loving memory of someone that was very near to the city and longtime City Parks employee and friend to many, and that's Mr. Bob Myers. And Mr. Brad McIntyre, I would like you to share a few words, since you're our Community Services Director, before we close in memory of Bob.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Bob Myers, a longtime employee with the city, passed away recently. Bob was part of our parks maintenance team for over 30 years and retired in 2022. Bob participated in our annual Tree City USA for over 25 years. He drove our city bus for our summer camp and our senior center trips, and if you know Bob at all, he entertained them all. Bob had a welcoming personality, a great smile, and he never met a stranger. Bob is survived by the two apples of his eyes, his son Jordan, who is here this evening, and his daughter Kelsey, who worked for the city as well. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about Mr. Bob Myers.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. And with that, in memory of Bob.